Mr. Fig, Chair recognizes you for a motion. I think you were trying to make one there when we went to the recess.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to, for Bill 102-24 to approve that bill.
Is there a second to Mr. Fig's motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fig and a second by Councilwoman Drake to approve 102-24. Is there any further council discussion on Bill 102-24?
Mr. President.
Mr. Tanner.
Point of order. Bill number 92-24 is first on our agenda. Shouldn't it be the first thing that we take a vote on?
Mr. O'Brien, you're, because there's this...
Right, so I think these are in the alternatives, so I think the Chair has the discretion to recognize the motion on either one. Only one can pass, though. I guess it's possible both could fail, but only one could pass, so passing A would preclude B and vice versa.
Any further council discussion on the motion? All right, we have a motion to approve Bill 102-24. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
I want to just say something real quick. I talked to a lot of folks in my district about this, and the people just are really unhappy with their property tax levels, very unhappy. And I really want to vote for Bill 92-24, but my constituents are telling me no more property taxes, so I'm going to have to say yes.
Okay, Mr. Martin?
I'm sorry, which, voting on the first one, first option?
102-24, B is B.
So, we haven't voted on A yet?
No.
We're voting on B first, to see if it passes.
I prefer A.
So?
No.
So, no, okay. Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
No.
No, okay. Mr. Catanz, right?
In keeping with what I heard tonight, and the cost savings to the citizens of Mishawaka by using option A, I will be voting no on option B.
Okay, no. Mr. Tanner?
Also, in lieu of thinking that option A is the smarter option, and B is penny-smart and pound-foolish, I don't contend with my peers who prefer that option, but I'm going to vote no.
No, okay. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And President Root?
Yes.
Yes. It passes 5-4.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 102-24 was passed by a vote of 5 to 4. That means that it makes a vote on 92-24 mute, or I don't think we need to, we cannot pass two competing bills. Correct, Mr. O'Brien?
Correct.
We will next move to the public hearing for the bond. Clerk, will you please read the public hearing?
This section, right, for Loewit?
Yeah, the whole paragraph.
Public hearing. Mishawaka Penn Harris Library and appropriation in the amount of $4,200,000 plus all original issue premium and investment earnings thereon, on account of the renovations of the improvements to the Mishawaka branch, including roof improvements, and the Bittersweet branch, including roof improvements, lighting, and HVAC upgrades, along with the purchase of equipment and technology throughout the library district, the project, including the incidental expenses necessary to be incurred in connection with the project and the issuance of bonds on account thereof. The funds to meet such additional appropriations are to be provided by the issuance and sale of bonds by the library.
Thank you. There will be a public hearing only, no vote on, this is the ability to appropriate the money that we just authorized in the bond. So, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the appropriation in the room, please come forward. Anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of appropriating the money? Anyone in the room who wants to speak in opposition to appropriating the money? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition to appropriating the money? The public hearing is now closed, and I understand there is no vote on this, that the vote is actually just on the bond.
That's correct.
That concludes our resolutions for tonight. We will next move to salary amendments, Bill number 88-24.
Bill number 88-24, an ordinance, amending ordinance 107-23, the same being an ordinance, establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, probate court.
Committee report, please, Ms. Drake.
Bill number 88-24 comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Cheryl Rush, Controller at St. Joseph Probate Court, 1000 South Michigan. We're requesting the salary amendment as we've added duties to this position. They'll be supervising residential placement for probation, and no appropriation was necessary as we had the funds.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on 88-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Public hearing on 88-24 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Mr. Fig. Any further counsel comment on 88-24? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 88-24 was passed by a vote of 9-0. Next bill is 89-24.
Bill number 89-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 107-23, the same being an ordinance, establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, probate court.
Committee report, please.
Bill number 89-24 comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
These appropriations and salary amendments are for the Community Correction Grant. The salaries are paid from the grant and probation user fees. The probation user fees have already been appropriated.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on 89-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone online? Anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online? Hearing done, the public hearing on 89-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess, it was seconded by Councilman Shetzel. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess? Mr. Catanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 89-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Next up is Bill number 90-24.
Bill number 90-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 107-23, the same being an ordinance, establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, Health Department.
Committee report, please, Ms. Drake.
Bill number 90-24 comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
I'm Mike Rubel with the St. Joseph County Department of Health. I am the Director of Operations. This is covered under our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. The funds will be used to cover the salary of our public health coordinator for 2025, and we will, this will allow us to use the entirety of the FEP grant for 2025. Any activities, any public activities that are, that our public health coordinator is using, we will be able to use HFI funds to fund those activities that he is doing with the public to educate regarding emergency preparedness.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on 90-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill number 90-24 is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton, seconded by Ms. Hess. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake? Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 90-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Next up is Bill number 91-24.
Bill number 91-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 107-23, the same being an ordinance, establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, Health Department.
Committee report, please.
Bill number 91-24 comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Hi, yes, Jody Parrots, Director of Nursing on the night floor. This is the funds we'd like to receive from our immunization grant we've gotten from, or awarded from state, and this fund of the 616,536,13 is to support my mobile team and a total of nine staff members and any of their supplies they may need.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill number 91-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone online? Anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online? Public hearing on 91-24 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Catanz, right, seconded by Mr. Fig. Any further council discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 91-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. That concludes our salary amendments for tonight. Next up is public hearing, public comments. Clerk, will you please read Bill 87-24?
Bill number 87-24, an ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose here and specified for several departments here enlisted of the St. Joseph County Government.
All topics tonight in Bill 87-24 were discussed at our August committee meeting by the council at this time, so we are ready to move to a public hearing on Bill number 87-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of any part of 87-24? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of any part of 87-24? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to any part of 87-24? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Christine Galvis. I live at 17837 Bridgeview Drive, South Bend, 46635, and it's been a while since I've been up here. I'm here because of C and D under Bill 87-24. I feel strongly that any monies that have been raised by any items sold at the Portage Manor do not get used for anything else but the Portage Manor. I'm not against the Miracle Field that's going up in Mishawaka, or that is proposed. Mishawaka's building a $38 million complex. Why are they doing a fundraising for a $1.5 million for the Normane Heights and for this Miracle Field? Any money of Portage Manor should be used for the Manor and stay with them. How are we going to be funding Portage Manor in the next couple of years until it sells? How is the heat, the electric, the water going to stay on, and who's going to pay for it? That $40,000 should be used for the upkeep, maintenance, surveying, marketing, plat, planning, anything, not a Miracle Field in Mishawaka. I'm sorry. Where's all the money going to come from for that? It's a historical building that needs to be protected. It cannot be allowed to deteriorate any further, and all the dollars available should go to the Manor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill number 87-24 is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
I have a question.
Ms. Hess?
Okay, so on item R, which is the $600,000, which was tabled on August 13th, I don't recall, I don't think there was any discussion in our committee meeting about that.
Mr. President, the petitioner asked that it be, that it remain on the table.
That it remain on the table, so item R is not part of this bill, then?
Oh, okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Baxmeyer?
Would you, would you like them to take, take it off?
So, we're only doing A to Q.
Because it's on the agenda, perhaps?
Let's have a motion to continue.
Let's, all right, so let's handle that first. Let's take a motion to leave R on the table. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to leave on.
Yeah, it's, it's on the ta, it's been tabled.
Tabled.
So, yeah.
To remain tabled. You say on the table.
Remain tabled, yeah. On the table, that's it.
You know.
So, Ms. Hess makes a motion to keep it tabled.
Okay, second.
All in favor of keeping Bill R, Part R, on the table at this time, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so Part R is tabled. We are now dealing with the rest of the Bill A through Q. May I have a motion on Bill 87-24?
Mr. Root, I have a question, sorry. On C and D?
Yeah.
Those funds, are they going into the general fund, John?
Yeah, they were. The, the proceeds from the, the Portage Manor Fund is closed out, okay? So, it's, it's closed.
Right.
Any expenditures for heat and so forth is being paid by the American Rescue Plan appropriation right now, and going forward, if it doesn't sell, it's going to be paid out of the general fund, probably Maintenance Department, in 2025. This money for the, the auction was deposited in the general fund, along with some money, about $40,000 that we had in an escrow, the resident trust account that hadn't been allocated to Portage Manor properly. But when we hired the CPA firm to help us, they figured out that that money should also go to the general fund. So, the general fund has over $80,000 of Portage Manor money, so to speak.
So, is that, some of that ARP money?
No, this is, this is different. The ARP is that separate appropriation. There's about $80,000 in the general fund from Portage Manor.
To pay for expenses?
Yes. It's to pay for these expenses, if that's what you desire, plus it can be used to pay for the utilities and so forth.
And there's $80,000 in that fund?
At least, it is at least that much, yes.
Thank you. So, there's money in there to pay for the expenses dedicated to Portage Manor?
There is, yes. This is funded.
All right, let me try again. Is there a motion on Bill number 87-24?
Move to passage.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Councilman Shetzel, seconded by Councilman Thomas. Any further council discussion on any aspect of 87-24?
Mr. Root?
A to Q? Mr. Catanz, right?
Like Mrs. Galvis, I too have some comments to make about items C and D, and I could not in good conscience not say something about the distressing and distasteful press conference that was held on August 21st by Mr. Dieter regarding the, touting the proceeds of the sale of Portage Manor's contents. I had a real problem with that, and believe me, I'm not opposed to funding a Challenger Little League in Mishawaka. What's distressing to me is that we have the funds to keep Portage Manor open, we have the funds to pay for a contribution to Mishawaka's Challenger Little League, Miracle Little League Park. We did a good job for over 10 years to get our surplus budget in the $20 million range. So, we had a lot of capacity to keep Portage Manor open and to close it in a humane manner, which didn't happen. The consultants that were hired suggested that there would have been 18-month closure. They were happy and pleased to see it closed in 45 days. There are a lot of people that suffered a lot of pain and a lot of consequences as a result of that cold, as a result of that closure. And what's not being said, but at the press conference that was held in August, is that we've already spent $234,000 just for off-duty police officers to provide security to a vacant building. What's also not being said is that we were convinced, and we made the decision as a county, council, and commissioners, to invest about $1 million in boilers, upgraded fire alarm systems, and roofing systems at Portage Manor prior to the decision to close it. So, there's been a lot of investment made in Portage Manor over the years, especially more recently. There's been a lot of expenses associated with it, and we're still paying for some of those expenses, but again, I don't oppose the contribution idea going to Mishawaka. It just kind of reeks to me of political maneuvering at a time when somebody else is running for office. And I, it's something we definitely could have paid for out of our general fund with the surplus we'd built up. So, I'm not against C and D, the concept of it, I'm just against the way that it was politicized. Thank you.
Any further council discussion on 87-24? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll on Bill number 87-24?
Mr. Catanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake? Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
And President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 87-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. That concludes our fiscal matters for tonight. Next up, we will move to land use and planning matters. Mr. Murphy, will you please read Bill number 80-24?
Bill number 80-24, an ordinance approving the petition for special, a special use filed by CS Realty Ventures LLC for property being located at 55801 Evergreen Plaza Drive and 12961 McKinley Highway, Penn Township. Petitioner, CS Realty Ventures LLC.
Committee report, please, Mr. Fig?
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 80-24 comes to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner, or, I'm sorry, area plan?
Yes, this is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Staff, with offices on the 11th floor of this building. This is a special use petition to allow for an active private park on the property outlined on the screen on the north side of McKinley, just west of Bittersweet. It is zoned I industrial. The special use is for an active private park with the intended use being indoor pickleball courts within the existing building. And here is that existing building, originally designed to serve as an industrial warehouse. And the site plan, more or less, just shows the existing building and parking. It accesses from Evergreen Plaza Drive. This comes to you from the Area Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation, 7-0. They found that this, this use was not inconsistent with the mix of uses along the McKinley Corridor, and in no way would it adversely impact ongoing industrial uses in the area or the more distant our single-family uses, particularly as the courts are indoor. Beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise, the, there's a representative of the petitioner here.
Any questions from the council for area plan? Hearing none, petitioner?
Good evening. Angela Smith from Dan Charner Associates, offices located at 1643 Commerce Drive. The property owner here has partnered with H2 Entertainment to utilize this area for indoor pickleball. The warehousing is built in a way that they can use it for warehousing in the future. They don't need it, and in this time, it's a good reuse of the building in a use that is less intense than what you could find for a traditional industrial use. We ask the council's favorable recommendation, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill number 80-24. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Not seeing any hands there. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Public hearing on Bill number 80-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on this bill?
Motion to pass, favor, please.
Second.
There a second?
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Shetzel, seconded by Mr. Tanner. Any further council discussion on this bill? Considering that this bill sits in my district, I am really excited to see this. I think it's a compliment to what Penn's doing just down the street, and when I talk to people out there, they are excited to have this facility coming into the community out on the eastern end of the county.
Mr. Root, a quick question. Are you planning on picking up pickleball?
I am, actually.
You are?
I looked into the ownership fees, or the membership fees for this particular one, and a little outside of my league. I will still be at Mishawaka's Twin Branch Park on the free course. If you want to play, I'll be out there, and we can...
Sounds good.
A match between Dan and Marcus.
Maybe Dan and I will take on Brian and Raphael. Any further council comments? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess? Mr. Catanz, right?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 80-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Next up is Bill 81-24.
Bill number 81-24, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 land uses Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 11810 Douglas Road, 54050 Buckeye Road, 11603 Douglas Road, and 11501 Douglas Road from A Agricultural District to R Single Family District. Petitioner, Victor F. Kupchak, estate for Sandra L. Schmidt.
Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 81-24 comes to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Staff. This is a petition to rezone four parcels near the intersection of Douglas and Buckeye from A Agricultural District to R Single Family District. These are at the southern end of Harris Township and the northern end of Penn Township, Douglas Road being the dividing point there. It's the, the parcels highlighted on your screen, approximately 76 acres in all. To the north, east, and west of this property are properties zoned A Agricultural District. Many of them are farms, some include large acreage residential uses. But then, when you get to the south, you do see that there is some, our single-family zoning down there, and a lot of it contains some built-out subdivisions, including the North Bridge Valley subdivision, and actually immediately to the south of this petition area is some property that was rezoned in 2021 from A Agricultural District to R Single Family for a future subdivision. That one will have Mishawaka utilities that are going to be running north from North Bridge Valley, which potentially could run up into this property in the future. This is a view of the property at the southwest corner of Buckeye and Douglas. It's currently wooded.[1662.18] And then, this is at the southeast corner. That property does contain what appears to be a vacant single-family home. The third parcel on the north side of Douglas also contains a single-family home and an accessory structure. And then, this is the further east parcel on the north end of Douglas. The site plan submitted doesn't really show any particular density or type of residential development. There's currently not utilities available, so this would be on well and septic. The zoning ordinance would allow half-acre lots on well and septic. However, the petitioner is proposing that any, any residential development that's dependent on septic would have a minimum of a three-acre lot on this property, which really just allows for more responsible development on septic, which will be more viable well into the future than the half-acre lots that's, that are otherwise permitted by the zoning ordinance. The area plan commission, in making its favorable recommendation, did make it subject to that proposed written commitment. So this, as I mentioned, did receive a favorable recommendation from the area plan commission by a vote of five to one, subject to that written commitment that there's a three-acre lot minimum for septic development. It was found that really the agricultural value of this small remaining agricultural district in southern Harris and northern Penn has really diminished over time, given that there's been prevalent development in every direction, and those county roads now see a very high rate of traffic, which probably makes the property undesirable for agricultural moving forward, but there is considerable residential demand. Furthermore, there might be utilities available in the future, but in the meantime, that three-acre lot minimum will ensure that septic development is done responsibly. We did have one resident who spoke in remonstrance out of concern that this might spur further agricultural land within the county being rezoned for agricultural purposes. Other than that, this was made subject to that written commitment. Staff would recommend that if you grant the rezoning, that you do make it subject to that same written commitment. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the counsel for area plan?
President Root?
Mr. Shetzel?
How many acres total and how many acres of that are now being farmed?
There's seventy-six acres total. I don't know if you have an estimate of what's farmed versus the wooded areas.
Good evening. Angela Smith with Dan Charner Associates, offices located at sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive. There's approximately, of the seventy-six, approximately twelve south of Douglas and twelve north of Douglas that are not wooded. Those aren't all necessarily being farmed, they're just not wooded. Unlike the parcels that you'll see around this particular property where you can see large farm fields, these are primarily wooded lots. The little bit that they are attempting to farm is hay farming, which takes a lot different approach than you would get with soybeans or corn, that it's a lot more labor-intensive and not something a lot of people want to take on in this day and age.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for area plan from the council? Petitioner?
I think, Councilwoman Shetzel's question kind of get at what I was going to address in that this is primarily wooded acreage here that does not have a high-yield farm productivity. It's kind of limping along, and what it does have, there have been interest, particularly in the parcel on the southwest corner for some development where people would like to live in a wooded area and are, have no problem having a larger lot. There may be potential in the future for more intense development on the larger parcels, but it's really hard for the property owner to even market that to a developer until they know that they can develop this under the R residential district. The cost of extending water and sewer would be substantial and would warrant higher density in there, but no one's going to want to take on the land cost without knowing that that is an option if they can get the utilities from Mishawaka. So at this point, we ask for your favorable approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. Who, Mr. Katanzright?
Do you agree with the written commitment requirement?
Yes, we propose a written commitment. We're, we're fine with that.
That need to be put in as an amendment or not?
It's a.
I'm asking Sean that question.
Oh, sorry.
So if you, if you make a motion to approve, you can make it subject to that written commitment?
Anything else from the council? We will move to public hearing on bill number eighty-one dash twenty-four. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? See no one? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? See no one? The public hearing on bill number eighty-one dash twenty-four is now closed. May I have a motion on an amendment? Or, you know what, no, let's just have a motion. We'll add the amendment.
Motion to approve. Bill number eighty-one twenty-four, subject to the written commitment.
There you go. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further counsel discussion? Would like to say that again, this is my district, along with, I believe, on the north side, Councilman Shetzel's. I live almost east of here, not too far, and so I, I'm a little sad to see my nice rural agricultural drive into town is disappearing. Many of you know that I've argued for years that we desperately need more housing on the eastern side of the county to support the growth in the county, and so I'm, I'm torn, but I am glad, as the representative for this district and for the eastern side of the county, to see housing developments continue to come into this part of the county. Any other counsel discussion? Court, please take the roll.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number eighty-one dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our land use and planning. Next up is any unfinished business? Hearing none. Next up is new business. We have a review and approval of Mr. O'Brien's legal services from June. Is there a motion?
Motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, but made by Councilwoman Drake, seconded by Councilman Thomas. Any further counsel discussion on the motion?
Mr. Root?
Ms. Drake?
Since the last few meetings, we've had some acts of political retribution, and we are not paying Mr. O'Brien for his work. It seems irresponsible for me for the council not to pay its bills, especially when they've been well documented, accurate, and moderate. So I would hope to see us all pass Mr. O'Brien's bills tonight.
Any further counsel comment or discussion on the motion?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzright?
To assume that this is political retribution, I think is really disrespectful to the rest of us. So to make that comment, not knowing what the rationale or reasoning behind it is, I don't appreciate that. Just want to say that for the record, because it's not about, we don't do political retribution. I don't. That's not my, that's not my bailiwick in terms of what we do up here in the council, but just wanted to clarify that.
Any further counsel comment on the motion?
President Root?
Mr. Shetzel?
None of my votes were political retribution. I would say, though, that we have seen, especially concerning Commissioner's attorney, Mr. Mish, political retribution. That is part of what's happening in this county, and, I mean, if we're going to go ahead and make that statement, let's be clear that there are other situations that could clearly be seen as political retribution.
Any further counsel discussion on the motion?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Morton?
I would be remiss if I didn't say, first of all, I'm, I'm not going to speak on any other perception as it pertains to Mr. Mish or anyone else, but I will speak on the fact that I have never made a decision, for the record, based upon political or any other type of retribution. And I will remain steadfast in never making any decision that I make on this council or anywhere else based upon any type of retribution, political or otherwise. I have spoke before about different opinions, and I respect each and every one of my colleagues' opinions on anything that we vote on. And I think some of the differences arise because of just perception and how things have gone in the past, as opposed to, and I'm not saying right or wrong at all, but as opposed to my way of looking at things have been shaped because of my thirty-plus years sitting up here. And I cannot get upset or say another opinion because the years of service have not been as long, is a matter of right or wrong. It's just a matter of difference of opinion and not represent, not retribution from my perspective.
Any further counsel discussion on the motion?
Mr. Root?
Ms. Drake?
I would just ask, if it's not political retribution, why are we not paying our county law bills?
Any further counsel discussion on the motion?
Mr. Root, I would just say, if you know, political retribution doesn't exist outside of, it doesn't exist if, outside of what is being accused here with Mr. O'Brien, then why do we normally, in council, sit back there and tell each other whether or not we want someone to represent us or anyone else on a council, and yet, when a councilman is, or not on council, but on a committee, and yet, when a councilman is on a committee that other members are unhappy with, those members don't say anything in our pre-meeting, but rather wait until we get out in council and then yell, "No." Don't say, "No," yell, "No." That's political retribution. So really, I mean, I think the conversation is over. Let's, let's vote. Let's, let's stop this. Political retribution, there's been plenty of it. That's just the way it's been.
Any further counsel comment on the motion?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzright?
During our budget discussions, we made a commitment in one of our very first sessions when we talked about, I think you and I both agreed in our years in the council, that we thought legal bills were getting way out of control, and we were going to form a task force, and we were going to address that during this budget cycle about legal bills, whether it's for the county council or for the commissioners or whatever department within the county. Our, our legal bills have exponentially increased over the years to a point where I wonder what value we're getting for that. And, and I know that you said you wanted to commission a, a panel about that topic, so hopefully, in our future budget discussions, we can talk about that. But, but back to Ms. Drake's questions.
Any further counsel comment on the?
Well, just, and back to her question, it's, it's, it's a matter of, we've never been billed per item, whether it's an email or phone call or for drafting of an ordinance, that was never a, a past practice. So that, that's why I think there's some resistance, at least on my behalf, why, why I don't care to keep paying the, the legal bills as they continue to rise, and they've nearly doubled since Mr. O'Brien's become our legal counsel.
Mr. Root?
Mr. Thomas?
So, I, Mr. O'Brien's bills are very detailed.
I agree.
Don't you agree with that, Mark? I think they're very detailed. So that, I appreciate that, and I think everybody here does. I don't understand why we're not approving his bills when they're that detailed. And I think we all know attorneys, I got attorneys in my family, and when they're that detailed, and we know there's attorneys that don't put it that, put it on paper that detailed, of course I would question it, but his bills are very detailed. That's why I don't understand why we're not paying them.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
Mr. Tanner?
I prefer, as a general principle, that personnel issues are not handled in the public eye. We've seen that happen earlier this year in other departments. Whether you agree or disagree with the result, it's moot. It was just handled in the public eye in a way that I think was the unbecoming of St. Joseph County government. Up to this point, the votes were the votes, and we didn't necessarily air too much dirty laundry as part of these council meetings. I have a lot to say on it. I'd rather, because it's a personnel issue, I'd rather keep those behind closed doors, but I'd also like to contend that this has ever been a political issue. I'll, I'll just declare that in and of itself and say I'm happy to talk further about this outside of a personnel issue in a public meeting. Thank you.
Any further counsel discussion on the motion?
Yes, I, I would like to.
Pass.
So I've been on the council since 2013, and not once has anyone ever accused anyone of political retribution or acted with political retribution that I know of. We have disagreements. We don't always see eye to eye on things, but there's always been a level of civility and collegiality among the counselors, so I think we all take a little umbrage to that accusation, and I myself am not, I'm not guilty of any political retribution. We were voting, my vote was, and I can't speak for other people's votes, was based on the fact that we were questioning the amount of additional legal bills we were receiving, whether they were detailed or not, which was out of the ordinary from what I had experienced in my previous years on the council. Thank you.
Any other counsel discussion on the motion?
Mr. Root?
Ms. Drake?
Mr. Murphy, I don't know if you can answer this question.
Sure.
It comes up all of the time, but do you know if Mr. Triple ever billed additionally outside of his work here, his salaried?
He did. He billed through his company, which he was a partner of Thorin Grodnick, so it wasn't an individual, but he did bill. And we did research that about a year and a half ago for you guys, and his bills were more in the neighborhood of two to three thousand dollars a month. So he did bill through his company because you could tell, he put initials next, we, we actually pulled all the bills that we could find. So, on average, they were about two to three thousand.
But, Mr. Murphy, would you care to expound on the types of charges? If I'm not, maybe I'm mistaken, but I was thinking that those bills were in connection with his work with.
Jamie Woods?
Jamie Woods, and based upon major projects that were happening with the commissioners?
They were, they were varied. I mean, I, I have the document here. It's American Rescue Plan work. That was when the American Rescue Plan was, you know, a major thing. Code enforcement, some code enforcement work.
When code enforcement was first implemented?
Yeah, it was, yeah, right. It would have been that time period, right?
Right.
Emergency, Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which we ran through our office, the auditor's office, was some time. Spent time on the IEC. I'm not sure exactly what he did with the IEC. I don't want to name this person, but an individual case. Project Honeysuckle, which was more of a bond kind of an issue. Public records request and redevelopment commission and voter registration. So those were the areas that he worked on during that time period.
In conjunction with Jamie Woods?
No, more, yeah, sure. I mean, Jamie was, they were partners, so I'm sure that they worked together.
But to me, there's a, a major distinction between those types of large projects as opposed to the types of bills that we're receiving, in, in my, in my assessment.
That's, that's a distinction you can make. I mean, I, all I do, all I know is.
That's a distinction that can be made, correct?
That's a distinction that you can make. I don't know, I don't really know the detail of what Mr. Triple's bills were, but it, I do have the categories of work that he did. So AM General was another project that he worked on. So he worked on a variety of projects, and, you know, I knew Mike, and he was a great attorney, so I don't think he did anything incorrect. I'm just.
And I'm not, I'm not implying that Mr. Triple nor Mr. O'Brien.
Right.
Have done anything incorrect.
Okay.
I'm just trying to make that distinction in the types of bills that were submitted.
Okay. I mean, that, that's what I have.
Mr. Root?
Ms. Drake?
So is any of that council-related work that you brought up, or do you not know?
I don't really know. I mean, it, it said AM General, that's more, you know.
Okay, then let me, let me stand corrected, okay? Let me retract the statement that I made, which was, you know, not council-related. Let me, allow me to retract that, but I still stand by a major difference in the types of billing that we're comparing.
Yeah, I don't know how to, you can compare those, but I'm just saying, these are the categories of work that he did. American Rescue Plan was probably council-related because that's, fell under the council, that, you know, that's the council was responsible for that. Code enforcement probably fell under the commissioners because they're responsible for, for that. Emergency rental assistance was the auditor's office because that was there. IEC was, you know, Bill Shalio and the Economic Development Team. So just looking at the names, I mean, you can kind of tell what he worked on, so.
You just kind of reaffirmed that the majority. Right. Exactly.
I don't make that distinction.
I know you don't, John. I'm just saying, you just said it.
I'm just telling you what, what he worked on, and that the average was, and the average was about.
Most of that is executive.
Three thousand dollars a month.
Not legislative. We're doing it with the executive. It's easy to tell.
Amazing.
Mr. Katanzright?
Mr. Murphy, when you, you gave that assessment of two to three thousand dollars a month, was that for Thorin Grodnick in general?
It was, yeah, it was, everything was billed through the company.
Okay. So, so some of that, though, could be attributed to Brandy Ecker, Phil Garrett.
Well, not, not by looking at the bills, because they put their initials next to the charges.
Okay.
So Dawn, from our office, actually just looked for the ones with the M-E-T or whatever his initials were.
Okay.
So that, that's how we, that's the best we can do. I, I don't personally know any of the work that he did, really, but that's what the documents say.
Wouldn't that in of itself make a major distinction if the bills were coming from Thorin Grodnick on these major projects as opposed to?
Well, it's just a difference between a partnership with other attorneys and a sole proprietor. That, that's the only difference I think there is.
If I may, Mr. President?
Mr. Murphy, looking at the bill, would it be fair to say that Mr. Triple billed based on kind of what he was working on, where Mr. O'Brien's tend to be more of what he actually did in regards to the work?
I, I don't know. I mean, these are pretty detailed. I have to agree with Joe. I mean, I, I don't know. I can't make a distinction like that. His, his invoices were just, Jamie's invoices are probably just as detailed as Thorin Grodnick's.
Further counsel comment on the motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Tanner?
I think I'd like to just offer my words of, hopefully clarity, to what Raphael was saying, in that I think the distinction isn't how much work is done or how large a particular project is. The distinction is what entity within county government requested the work to be done to begin with. If it was work with the auditor's office, I would imagine that it was upon the request of the auditor's office. If it was work with the commissioners, or any of the departments under their purview, it would have been work requested by them, which I believe, my understanding, was that Mr. Triple actually provided a written statement to attest to this, that his billing separately for Thorin Grodnik was based on other departments requesting that effort, it not originating from the county council. Now, that's nothing that I have here to submit in record or anything else like that. But I, I think, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Raphael, but that's the distinction that we're identifying.
Correct.
I'll also add that it took some time to locate, but Mr. O'Brien did provide a letter of engagement at the beginning of this year. It also took some time to locate the council rule-based performance evaluation that's done annually. And the combination of those two things, and our council rules in general, led me to have a discussion with some of the other peers who had contention with some of the bills to, ironically, after all this discussion, approve Mr. O'Brien's invoice before tonight. That was, and I expect still is the plan for those who had a point of contention, because it was in alignment with that letter of engagement. So for what that's worth, can we please take the vote?
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Clerk, will you please take the roll on the motion?
And what, what's the motion again?
The motion is to approve Mr. O'Brien's legal bill for June 2024.
Okay. Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Mr. O'Brien's legal bill for June of 2024 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes new business. Next is old business. Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes. On any item not on tonight's agenda, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle. I wasn't planning on speaking, but some of the conversation that came up here, and I'm not going to speak on that conversation, but everybody go, "Hum," really, friends. I, I like to see the discussion. I, I don't like discourse, but I, I think you guys talked it out. But there was something that came up, similarly in New Carlyle, we're, we're talking about some recreational areas. And, and the people that kind of look like me in town started talking about pickleball courts. And they wanted these pickleball courts, and everybody wanted these pickleball courts. And I said, I let them get it out of their system, and I'll say the same thing to you, my friends, that I said to them after they were all done. Is there going to be an urgent care facility really close by for you folks who haven't done a whole lot of running for a few years, and are going to need urgent care? Thank you.
Mr. Caruso, just so you know, the first time I picked up the paddle thing and went out and played this year, I did pull my groin. And my son will not let me forget it. So you are dead on, my friend.
Tom Rowe, 26160 Lake Lane, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. I addressed the county commissioners this morning on one specific thing. In the public comments section, they said, "Public comments will not be accepted on personnel issues." And yet, I find myself tonight, once again, addressing this county council. I'm interested to see the feedback that's going back and forth between you as council members. The bottom line is, I read in the newspapers about personnel that are employed by this county that should never go to the newspaper. It should be handled internally. I expressed the same concerns to two of the county commissioners. I'm not going to get into addressing names or personnel, because then I would be violating a confidentiality issue that all of you should hold dear and true. That's one thing. As it said, items on the agenda. I'll be close to get this done. I understand when you have amendments sent to committee, and then you meet as a committee, and you discuss the issue, you bring it back at a later date. So it's sent to the committee for favorable, unfavorable, and yet, it comes back here. And yet, if I go to a committee meeting, to my understanding, I cannot make a comment or ask a question. I'm there. So it comes back to the, to the committee here for hearing. I can't ask a question here. I don't get an answer. So my question to you, which I will not get an answer, is when in this loop do we as citizens get to participate? Because I don't see anywhere until the very end, when there's public comments at the end, after you most often have already had your favorable or unfavorable recommendations. I know I'm not going to get an answer, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, because I don't see this as being any form of constituent participation whatsoever. Think about it, council.
Mr. Root. Mr. Katanzright.
No, I'm not allowed to engage with people unless they allow me to. Can I engage with Mr. Rowe?
If he is willing to. I will always say that a, a member of the public, it is their time to comment. They don't have to respond to us, but if they so choose, they may. But you're not required to.
I understand that.
Do you want me to respond to you, Mr. Rowe, or not?
Sir? Sir?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright's asking you, asking you, do you want him to respond to your question?
Yes.
So, Mr. Rowe, you are allowed, and we do encourage public participation in all of these bills. What happens in committee doesn't necessarily mean that's how we're going to vote when we come out here. So three things can happen in committee, four things, actually. A bill can be favorable, unfavorable, or without recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
Or can be held in committee.
Right.
But just that recommendation from the committee report, when it comes out here, does not mean it's going to be voted on in that way. So, and then, and then you, and you've exercised this many times before, during the public hearing portion of a bill, the public is allowed to participate and get up and say they're in favor or against a particular bill we're going to vote on. The other part is, I would encourage you to do all of our, I know that mine, and I'm sure most of us are very accessible. You can call us on the phone, you can email us, you can send us letters, which happens all the time. If you have a particular issue that's important to you, please, please engage with us. We, we want your comments. We want your feedback.
Well, my question with this, unless I go to a special committee hearing on it, I'm not going to know anything. Correct?
Well, you'll know by like, tonight's agenda, all the first readings that were made tonight, and they were, they were assigned to committee. So if a particular bill interests you, you can come to that committee meeting and listen, and then see-
I can listen.
Certainly.
Can I provide feedback?
The minute the meeting's over, you can call me on my cell phone, or get ahold-
But not during the meeting itself. Okay. Thank you. I think I have a pretty clear understanding. Yes.
I guess one last comment. I do believe that Mr. Murphy offered to meet with you afterwards to answer your previous question during the meeting tonight.
I've already got the answers to that one. You're talking about probate salaries?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that when you asked a question, our auditor offered to have the answer for you if you were willing to stay after the meeting. Am I correct, John?
Yes.
Okay. To me, that's very important to what you're talking about.
And see, I never heard that before.
Regardless of, if you got that answer in this particular instance, tonight is irrelevant to me. I'm saying that our auditor, when you were walking away, he said, "Sir, if you were willing to stay five minutes afterward, I will provide those answers for you."
Thank you. I was not aware of that.
That's why I'm saying it.
Yeah.
Mr. Root?
Um, Mr. Thomas.
Sorry. I just, Tom, I just want to let you know that in my district, and Mr. Caruso will verify this, there's a lot of action out there. I am on the phone and emails constantly, and I'm talking to folks just like you all the time. So pick up your phone, call Mark Katanzright, or wherever's district you're in, or email him. I mean, I'm always on the phone or on the email constantly with my constituents, so, and we go, we banter back and forth all the time. So that's how it works. I'm pretty sure your representative would be more than happy to talk to you. The Q and A, a good Q and A.
And for the record, it doesn't have to be your rep. You can call me anytime. I'll give you my cell this evening.
Paul Raphael, he'll help you.
If I don't know the answer, I'll try my best to get it for you.
And I know it's not to be discussed, discussed tonight. I understand that. But there's two bills that have particular interest to me. They're right by the Speedway.
I don't care. I understand that.
Hi there again. Christine Galvis, 17837 Bridgewater Drive, South Bend. And I used to work at a place, and one of the guys, who was really quite a decent guy, he would just say, "Can't we all just get along?" Anyway, I'm here for something that's not on the schedule or on the agenda for today. I live on the east side of Ironwood Drive, in a subdivision off of Ironwood. And it is between the Toll Road Bridge and Cleveland Road. Now, the county has done a fabulous job on rebuilding Ironwood Drive and Douglas Road. It is our main route, and it's probably used at least ten times a week, those two roads. Years ago, I started complaining and got nowhere regarding the weeds that constantly grow around the Toll Road and on the, the Ironwood Drive all the way from Cleveland to Douglas, which was very nice, until all the weeds came up. I actually got action years ago by writing a letter to Father Jenkins, and I did get action. The weeds need cutting on Ironwood Drive, and I would hope that somebody could handle this. The drainage things that were put in between Cleveland, and they're not all new, a lot of them have been there for years, get full of debris constantly. So what does our county do? They put up signs that says, "Road may flood." Nobody keeps the drainage, the drainage things cleared off. I've lived there for twenty-one years, and Ironwood, near Tollview, has never flooded. It did this year. In addition to, Cleveland Road is falling apart between Ironwood and Tollview. No, I'm sorry, Ironwood and Martin. If you're going east, you're headed, you gotta be heading east, because that's the part that's falling apart. It was never repaved when they did the big repaving some years ago. I did call and complain about this a couple of times to the county, the property department. And I was told that a while ago, there were like a hundred and ninety county employees, and now there are fifty-two county highway employees, and there just isn't enough time to be getting anything done. There's not enough people. What can you do as council people to investigate this and see what the heck is going on? I shouldn't have to contact whoever the replacement is for Father Jenkins. And I just want to say, hopefully, you people can all go home, watch the debate, the debate, and say, "I don't ever want to act like that." Thank you.
I see that Sky Matters is on. Sky, did you hear the, the last comment?
Yes, sir, I did. I actually, I wrote it down about the weeds down Ironwood Drive. And I also wrote about the drains full of debris. We try to clean those drains out at least once a, a year. When I say clean, we have a back truck that would take out, though, to, to clean those. And I'll take a look at the other issues that were brought up, and I'll take a look at the weeds. I know that we'd had a service request in for that recently. I just don't know what they've gotten, gotten to.
Yes, and I did get a phone call on that, too.
Thank you, Sky.
I'm not that much of a pain in the butt. I just like to see my neighborhood done right. And I'm really sorry that two people walked out of this place with great big smiles on their faces. But at least you weren't against each other. You voted nine to zero.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Is there anyone online who would like to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Hearing no one, we are finished with privilege of the floor tonight. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post? The ayes. We are adjourned.